Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting of October 20th, 2021. I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the City Clerk in the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the City Clerk and forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on October 20th, 2021. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Roll call, please, Ms. Medina.
Here.
Mr. Galais?
Here.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd just like to start out with a moment of silence for the Bayonne resident, the nurse, Marie Ambrosia, who lost her life, was murdered in Times Square. She was buried and had her funeral service this week, so let's just have a moment of silence and remember her and her family. And one other, some housekeeping stuff before we get started. I just want to let everyone know, the time is not set, but I want to put it on everyone's radar, that the Office of Social Services Department and Housing and Community Retention, I've been in contact with Director Frank Maza, they were in town recently, I think this week, at BOF doing rental assistance applications. They will be coming into, I'm arranging to have them come into Bayonne and help other residents in town, not necessarily just BOF-qualified people, or scheduling something, hopefully we'll put it together, just be looking out there, hopefully the mayor will put it on the website. It'll probably be located at the library, if not here, but I know I've gotten a lot of concerns about rental assistance and people struggling after COVID and now that the moratorium is ending, so be on the lookout for that because we will be working with Director Maza, okay? Thank you, Madeline.
Our first item is a resolution postponing the final passage of an ordinance entitled an ordinance entitled, ordinance of the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of the lease purchase agreement with the Hudson County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of up to $95 million aggregate principal amount of the authority's guaranteed lease revenue bonds and any notes issued anticipated thereof by the Hudson County Improvement Authority to the meeting of November 10th. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
My second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
No.
Oh, two is also a resolution postponing the final passage of an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, state of New Jersey, authorizing the guarantee of the payment of the principal of and the interest on not to exceed $95 million of the aggregate principal amount of the city's guaranteed lease revenue bonds to be issued by the Hudson County Improvement Authority for the purpose of providing additional security therefore in determining certain other matters in connection therewith to the meeting of November 10th. Mr. Carroll, would you like to move it?
Move it.
Mr. Lappalusa, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
I abstain.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
No.
Oh, three is an ordinance entitled, the bond ordinance, providing for the funds, various 16th Street Park improvements by and in the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson State in New Jersey, appropriating $1,500,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $750,000 in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. It was introduced at the meeting September 22nd, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting October 20th and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution ordering the ordinance to be given a second reading is moved by Council Member Lappalusa. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, the bond ordinance providing for the various 16th Street Park improvements by and in the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson State in New Jersey, appropriating $1,500,000, therefore, which also includes the grant from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program and authorizing the issuance of $750,000 in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Do we have any hand?
One hand raised online.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, good evening, City Council, Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. It was a little hard to hear, so I wasn't quite sure what the park, and, you know, if you can correct me on it, I think I heard $500,000 in a bond.
$1,500,000.
1.5 million, and it's 16th Street Park.
Okay, can I ask what, you know, what type of improvements we're making for that amount of money?
Mr. Cotter? Oh, Sumac is here. I'm going to ask our city planner to come up and talk on that.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Peter. Also, Director Cotter is here. The planning department prepared the application for this. This is actually a grant that we're applying to from the federal government through the Department of Environmental Protection, but as it is a grant, we actually have to bond for the money and put the money up to get reimbursed. We do not know at this point in time whether we will receive it. It made it through the first round and it will be looked at in the spring, and so we're hopeful we'll be able to get it, because as you know, under Director Cotter, we've been doing improvements all along the 16th Street waterfront. We just opened the boat launch last week, but we've also done part of the walkway, and so this is, this is part of an ongoing project that is just missing the final piece, so that's what we applied for, and we had a lot of help on it, and we're hopeful we'll get it. Donna Mallory was very helpful in getting the bond ordinance ready so that we would be able to say we have the money.
Sorry, it's very hard, Peter, I don't know, it's my connection, but, so I gather, ultimately, this is going to link the West Side Walkway project that, you know, has been ongoing for quite some time, and we're, I guess, looking to get money from elsewhere, you know, but ultimately we're bonding today for it.
Because, yes, Peter, you're absolutely right, and I have the application, I can, I can forward it to you, like, I think it's in my computer, so I think I have your email, I can do it now. It's long, though, it's, it's not many pages.
No, I appreciate it, and that would actually be better, because like I said, the connection doesn't seem good on my end, and I'll shoot you an email, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's efficient here, park access improvements for disabilities.
It finishes off.
Bench's walkway lighting and other park utilities, landscaping improvements, aesthetics, shoreline, including, but not limited to structural vegetation protection?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But we'll send you the whole thing, Peter.
But it was a much larger grant, and we've been, we've been working on it, so this would be the final piece.
Okay, this is better view. The microphone in the back seems to be working good, but the one at the podium is very choppy. It's not Peter's connection, it's also choppy for me.
All right, so maybe move that closer? No, we might have to move the podium closer.
Yeah, I think it's the podium mic as well as your mic in the front, too.
Yes.
When you're reading off the proposals, both of those are coming through really poorly.
It's the online mic, right, you're talking about?
The online mic or the?
Your mic is coming through clear, the lady in front of you is reading everything that's coming through really poorly, as well as the podium mic is coming through really poorly.
I think it's the disc, though, Madeline.
Can you hear me out clearly?
You're coming through a little better, yeah.
Okay, then I'm going to get the other mic.
Okay, they're saying online is fine, so I think it's the spike.
Sorry if you can't hear me out there. Are there any other speakers? No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski? Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
Second.
Which one is Gump's?
Aye.
I don't have the details of it.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
But it's not in here, the details, the years and everything. I don't have the details, the years or anything, because we didn't get it back from. Which properties are identified as block 751, lot 1.25?
I didn't have, got it today.
1315, 2011, has shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, which was introduced at, first meeting held September 22nd, was published in the Jersey Journal, posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of October 22nd, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution ordering, we've ordered to be given a second reading, would you like to move it?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez? Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski? Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, approving the financial agreement by the city of Bayonne, LLC, chosen Urban Renewal LLC, for the property located in Cheltenham Way, which is identified as block 751, lot 1.25, 11, has shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance a motion to close, starting if the council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
They're having problems hearing you now, Madeline.
Get, Peter, hit the hand raise again.
I don't have the details on this, do you? Is it all in that report, the years and everything? No, because it only came today, so I didn't print it.
25-year program, it begins at 11.50%, increases to 14.00.
What are the years increases, though? What years does it increase? I'm looking. At eight, year eight, it looks like?
I think 1 through 7.
Yeah, so at eight, year eight, then it looks like year 18, and then 22, year 18, so it's only. Yes, Peter, I'm sorry, so I'm just, sorry, we got this back, because all pilots now get reviewed by our outside financial consultants, so we only got the report back today, or I only received it today, so I'm just going to give the details of the pilot. This is for a property out on the base. It is 25 years, starts at 11% and increases up to 14, with an increase at year eight, and then I think another one at year 18, if I'm looking at the numbers correctly. So, Peter, do you have questions? That's just a general overview. Peter, are you there?
I'm sorry, council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. No, that covered it, I just wanted to kind of get an overview of what the pilot agreement was.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I actually, I want to just say something about this pilot. I've, you know, I have no problem with the pilot, but I do have, I think all language, all of our pilots have language written in there about timeframes, correct? So, this, this particular pilot is going to a developer who has, I think, three other pilots with us. One pilot is already being built, one building project is already being built, the other two don't have site plan approval yet, so I would just, you know, we have a lot of pilots out there that aren't being acted on, and I just would like to make sure that, Jay, we add language in there that says that, you know, we have two years to get site plan approval, and then four years to be in the ground, or the pilot should automatically expire, because what we're finding now is properties that we gave pilots to seven years ago still haven't done anything, and the financial situation has changed, and I think it's behooving on, at that time, let them reapply, and whoever's sitting here should be able to make that decision if in six, in four years, nothing has happened. I mean, I don't know how anyone else feels about leaving pilots hang out there for 10, 15 years.
I think that's a great idea, and I'm encouraged.
I always thought two and a half, but two's fine.
Yeah, well, something like that.
Six months, we're not going to argue on it, but, you know.
I think we should just put language, make sure that it's in there, so we want to approve this with that subsequent language being in there, that two years to site plan, four years to build out. If you don't build out, then the pilot would automatically expire, and they'd have to reapply if they want to, and that term, at that time, those terms would be reconsidered with where the state of the city is and what our economy is like at that time. Yes, did you have?
Yeah, Council President Donald Pepe from Scrincie-Hollandbeck on behalf of the applicant Ma Derga Chosen. Listen, I think that's a great idea, too, because it is absolutely our intention to proceed, and if we run into something that would prevent us from doing so, and I think that COVID might have prevented some of the other applicants from building, but it's really the same family, but a separate group, we're prepared to proceed expeditiously, we're out seeking financing and development partners right now, that's why this was critical to us. One other thing I'd point out about this particular application that's probably different than most of the others you've heard, we are seeking to bite the bullet on a high-rise development, and we think that's really critical to bringing the peninsula to the next level, and we need the assistance because high-rise construction costs are 50 to 70% greater than the stick construction that everybody else has built out on the peninsula. So, we, I welcome any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them, and we look forward to your support.
No, no, I'm excited about the project, I'm happy, I think that's the location for these high-rises, and I'm glad we're finally going to get our first one down there. Okay, Madeline, it's, we're approving it with that condition on it?
I'm fine, we're fine with that.
No.
Two and a half years?
Two and a half years, we'll do two and a half, Gary said two and a half, that's fine, two and a half and four.
Months, very good.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I understand we have supply chain problems right now, too, with materials, so we'll do the two and a half. Okay, Madeline, you got that?
There's one more question, I will take a motion to close.
So move.
Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski? Aye.
And on the motion for final passage, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski? Aye.
And on the motion to move, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski? Aye.
And on the motion for final passage, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski? Aye.
Thank you. Five, it is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, to adopt the official street name for the new roadway located in Bayonne Maritime District, on the peninsula at Bayonne Harbor, which is introduced at the meeting held September 22nd, was published in the Jersey Journal, and posted on the board as required by law, with notice that it would be presented in the document, and filed in the public hearing of December 22nd. The council supports this consideration and in support of the hearing. And a resolution by the board, by Councilmember Lappalusa, giving the second reading, Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
Madeline, can you turn your mic back on, because that's for the TV, no one can hear you now on the TV? So, the other one is for the, that's for the web, webinar? For the TV, they're saying they can't hear you now, they could hear you earlier. I just got three messages saying people can't hear you.
So, we'll do oh five again. It's an ordinance rename, adopting the official street name of a new roadway located at Bayonne Maritime District at the peninsula at Bayonne Harbor, was introduced at the meeting held September 22nd, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of October 20th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. The resolution was moved by Councilmember Lappalusa, giving the ordinance second reading, and was seconded by Councilmember Perez, and on that resolution for second reading, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, to adopt the official street name for the new roadway located in the Bayonne Maritime District of the peninsula at Bayonne Harbor. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any questions on oh?
One hand raised online.
Did he say no?
No, yeah.
Okay. Okay, no protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, I take a motion to close.
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, six is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, approving a financial agreement by and between the city of Bayonne and Woodmount, Bayonne Phase II Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at West 52nd Street, which property is identified as block 37, lot 1, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held September 22nd, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of October 20th, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president, Mr. Perez, will you second?
We want to table this, Madeline?
You want to move the table?
Yeah, we haven't gotten the, the report from our, the finance consultants on the viability of it.
Okay, and on the motion to postpone, who'd like to second?
Second.
And on the motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, seven is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 3, Police Regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held September 22nd, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of October 20th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by Councilmember Lappalusa, Mr. Galais, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 3, Police Regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Okay, looks like there's no questions on that one. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, eight is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic, and it's for deleting four restrictive parking zones, and a resolution moved by the council president, giving the second reading, giving the ordinance second reading, Mr. Galais, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution, ordinance is read by title, ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
Someone, second?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski. Okay. I don't know... Adrian? Can't read his last name. Okay.
My name is Yehav Gamal. I'm a citizen of Bayonne.
You just raise that up so we can hear you. I know they're not going to hear you online.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
Hi, Yehav Gamal is... I'm a citizen of Bayonne and in same time, I'm the owner of Cascom property. I do have a redevelopment plan. It's going to be reduced today. There's been a couple issue on it, so I would love to table it until I fix it between my team and the city team. So I appreciate if you guys honor it to me to table it till next month. And another thing, I just found out now, even if you don't agree with us, is the block is wrong. This is not my block. One of them is wrong, so it's anyway need to be fixed.
It might be on the typo on the paper.
Yes.
It's not on... Probably not.
What I need, just to table it for one month until my team start working with the city team and found out how we can fix this couple issue.
Okay. So, Ms. Mack, would you have a... Would you have an issue if we table this? Do you think it's okay to table this?
Council President, the planning board prepares the plan at direction and we give it back to you. If we, you know, if everybody needs more time, it's fine.
Okay. We'll make that decision. I don't see a problem with it, but that's 010.
Thank you.
When it comes up.
Leave it away, we'll, you know, we'll work with...
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Guevara. 97 Oak Street. Cheryl Riscard.
Oh, I didn't even see her.
Good evening, Council.
Cheryl, can you just... Cheryl, can you just tip that mic down so we can hear you?
Good evening, Council. This message is for Mayor Davis. Mayor Davis, I would like to know who gave Michael Boschwick authorized this man to make a movie and disgrace me in my town? Put me in the street to watch me die? This is the most sick, insane situation I ever, ever heard in my life. And this is Bayonne? He's called a mayor? The mayor of this town? Would do this to an individual? I wouldn't care who they were. It's a disgrace. He should leave the town. Never mind run for mayor again. How dare he? And how dare everyone watch this go on? And who gave the residents the right to verbal harass me? And the police walk away?
Cheryl, I'm sorry what you're dealing with, but I hear you. I understand you.
President, it's a very, very sick and sad situation. Nobody knows me. My friends know me. A lot of people know me. And for somebody to tear my reputation because of the greed for money, they're out of their minds for letting this happen. To tell me what I did with my private life, nobody's behind the doors with me. Nobody walk in those streets. These kids, I have kids tormenting me. Nasty. It's totally, totally out of order and disgusting. This man should leave the town. And the guy making the movie? He needs to be off the streets. He's a murderer. Period.
Okay, Cheryl, I hear you. I empathize with you. I will relay the message for you.
I have to say it like it is. I'm a real person, President Cheryl.
Yes, I know, Cheryl. I know you. You know, I'm sorry you're going through what you're going through. I don't know...
It's disgusting. It really, really is disgusting.
And we... I can only deliver the message to him that you're giving me. That's all, you know, all I can offer to do. I wish it can help you in some other way, but your issue obviously is with the mayor. So, you know, you'll have to bring that up.
Maybe one day we'll have a woman mayor.
Mrs. Wilson?
Good afternoon. Why don't you talk to everybody?
Good evening.
So this is my third time that I'm here. The first time I was here, I told you that your business administrator had bought my name. Someone upset... Up there said, "No, she didn't." I have the proof. I know you cannot do nothing with Melissa because she's your problem, but I don't lie on people. When I tell you something, I'm going to find the proof so you can know. That's number one. Number two, she just said she wished a woman would be mayor. We all wish that maybe. But to be a mayor of a town, you have to have respect for your citizens. I asked you to apologize to the hunger-free group twice. You have not. You sent me a text message. If I broke your window in your car and I sent you a text message, how would you feel? Just let me know that you don't respect me. Because you could have called... You could have called me into your office. We could have met in the park, but a text message? So don't say you have my phone number to call me because you have my phone number. And I thought this was the low of the low. So how you want somebody to trust and believe in you if you can't be a real woman? Stand up and correct the mistake.
I think...
The same newspaper that you put the article in, you should have put it back in the article that you apologized just like you do on this phone.
I...
Show everybody this one too.
Stephanie, I apologize to you for what I said. And you said I said something that I didn't say in there. And then I sent you a message saying after that meeting, I'd like to sit down and talk to you and see how we can...
That's not what this message says, Sharon. It says, "Hello, Stephanie. I hope you are well. I was hoping that you and I can talk, discuss the future, hunger-free, and the Bayonne community. I have always supported and you and the system. You provide the most vulnerable. I apologize to you in the words slack in the newspaper." They want that in person. They don't want it in my text message.
But I did apologize for that the last meeting too, Stephanie. I did.
They want you in person. And Mr. Carroll... Mr. Carroll agreed to have a sit-down with them. We already have a date for their sit-down. We want a date from you.
Okay. But I offered to have a conversation with you. If you want me to come, I will come. But I mean, that text message was a way to reach out.
We're just asking for a date that you're available to meet them and explain to them everything, what happened and why it happened.
Anytime, Stephanie.
You want people to trust and believe in you guys. But when you do dirty stuff or you have people you sit up and you work with every day, or even she ran for school board, they have to do underhand garbage, I wouldn't vote for her a day in hell. No, you cannot stop her. But I know there was a meeting, and someone should have said, "Don't let her do that because Stephanie's been doing it for four years in Bayonne, always." There's no respect. And that's why women can't stick together because we don't respect each other. Because somebody had to have the last hit. A date and a place, that's all we want from you.
Sure.
That's it.
And Stephanie, I do respect you and I respect everything you do for the community.
Ms. Klemick?
Could I just, before we move on? With respect to last month, we were talking about trying to find a place. Also on last month was the issue of Holy Family. I'm curious, and I guess Jay, you might have the answer. There was an agreement to assume three properties once Holy Family was turned over. The city would get three properties. Is it possible legally, is it possible to perhaps use one of those properties as a communal entity for organizations such as Ms. Glover's and others? Not just solely one, but for the greater use, for the greater good. Is that possible or...
It is possible that would change the amount of money that you'd have available to pay down. I think we were talking about this several years ago now. I think we were talking about using those properties to pay down the amount of debt that was incurred in connection with the purchase of Holy Family. So that would be a choice for the council to make.
It's not that I'm against anything like that, but I don't know if those properties are really conducive for storing all that stuff.
They might not be in the shape of either.
Right. Maybe convert them, but...
While we're on the subject, it's something to consider and to put out there so we could assess the shape they're in.
Is there anyone online?
No, well, there's one more.
Grabbing a handrail.
Sorry. All right, we'll take that one.
Peter.
He said Peter. Go ahead, Peter.
Sorry, I was accidentally muted. Mr. Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. Good evening, Council. All right. So last month, Tim Boyle was fired after he was caught secretly recording a female employee. Not just a employee, but an employee at the center of a major lawsuit against the city for discrimination and retaliation, which has been going on for months. Back in February, audio of the law director surfaced where he referenced the same employee, and I'm paraphrasing here, as a jerk for not rowing in the right direction and stated, I quote, "I told my wife, 'I'm going out with my sword on this lady, not on my shield.'" Does anyone see a pattern here? We have intent, we have motive, it's literally all there. If you aren't rowing the right way, in the right direction, if you don't do what the mayor wants, if you dare to question this type of retaliation, you can expect in Bayonne. You know, I think everyone should agree that this is unacceptable. We need people to question things without having to fear what may happen to them. It aggravates me that when I asked a question last month about the mistreatment of our council president at the 9/11 memorial, only two members of the council, Mr. Galais and Mr. Carroll, agreed that this behavior was wrong. All of you should be united on this, not divided because of politics. What message are we sending to other female employees in City Hall? You can't have people afraid to speak up. For years, we've had people speak out after they were terminated. Stacy Purcella, Sincere Ross, Gail Gideski. Finally, we have a woman so courageous to speak out. And where's the support? It's frustrating to see this going on. And it's just a continued behavior, you know, that's been allowed maybe to go unchecked by mayors for years and years and years. But it's just, it simply has to stop. And somebody has to have the courage, you know, and then this woman has the courage to report this stuff. And after audio comes out of the motive and the intent of the brain trust behind the mayor, and then we see a director who was appointed to that position by the mayor turn around and secretly record a female employee using his cellphone, you know, at some point this has to stop. And it starts with the city council. It starts with people speaking out and saying, "No, I'm not going to stand for this." Folks, if you don't realize, the temperature of the election and everything going on, people are talking, and this isn't like before. So you guys got to start to wake up and do the right thing because I honestly feel the electorate this time is going to do the right thing. So, you know, and just more. I mean, just more to see the type of treatment is just with... I don't know. I mean, I'm never short for words, so I certainly speak out when I see, you know, something wrong, injustice. This is definitely wrong and people need to have her back. How many people have reached out to Melissa Matthews? They asked her if she's okay? If she's okay after another director turned around and started recording her? I mean, this is so disgusting. And, you know, it's frustrating. So that's my comment tonight. I hope that every council member, everybody in the audience, everybody listening at home understands that this is not acceptable behavior. This can't be written off as, "Well, this has always been this way." It has to change. We need it to change. Because we need people inside City Hall to not just do the job that the mayor requests them to do, or asks them to do, or tells them to do, but to do the actual job of the people. And if something is not right, and it may not be in line with what the mayor has going on, it should be okay for them to step up and say something or question something without the fear of retaliation, without the fear of them losing their job, without the fear of being ridiculed throughout the community, without the fear of any of their relatives maybe losing their jobs or being put in a different department or thrown in the back of a garbage truck. You know, this is so absurd. And this is, you know, part of the reason why I got involved initially, and this behavior, you know, just still continues. And I hope that at some point, somebody and some people will wake up and go, "This behavior is unacceptable and we're better than this." So thank you. You know, it's frustrating and, yeah. So thank you, Council.
I'd like to clarify my position. He had me as saying I thought that was wrong last month. What I thought was wrong and what I spoke of last month was that the fact that screen time during a 9/11 event was an issue at all, especially an issue for public consumption, I thought was disgusting. Thought it was last month, think it is now. It's a childish problem. And I hope that this is not a continuous thing, that we put the survivors and the families of the 9/11 victims through every month because the screen time was an issue.
This was American blood that was spilled. Making a political issue out of it, it's totally wrong. And I'm disgusted with that man.
It's not? No, it's not a political issue, Juan. It absolutely...
Don't tell me you're making it a political... It's your political agenda.
No, absolutely not. Absolutely not. There's fair time for everybody. Every person got to speak except for the county president, because she dared the world to turn away.
I didn't speak either at that event. Should I start complaining?
Council president spoke. She made a speech.
I'm sorry. Can we all have... Can we all... All right, Peter, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Keep your politics out of this.
No, I'm not...
Gentlemen, I mean...
Absolutely nothing to do with politics. This is...
Don't engage.
No, 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 no. I'm...
All right, this is not a back and forth. They went back.
I relinquished my time and absolutely not. But that's what you do, Neil. You wait until the opportune time and then you speak. That's why we never had a debate.
I wait until the appropriate time.
You know what I mean? You're... Yeah, no, you're accountable, Neil. But anyway.
Excuse me, Mr. Franco? Mr. Franco?
Look who's talking.
This is not a Q and A. You voiced your opinion. Do you have anything else to express?
Absolutely. No, I want to comment back to Juan.
No, no, no. It's not a Q and A. It's not a tit for tat, Mr. Franco.
A statement period.
It's a statement period.
Just make a statement, Peter, and then...
I'm going to make my statement. It had nothing to do with politics. Everybody is entitled to hear from the leadership of the city. Absolutely. They listened to the mayor, the council president went to speak, and then all of a sudden the camera turns another angle. But they conveniently come back to Mr. Juan Perez because everybody's concerned to hear what Juan Perez has to say. You know what I mean? It's so unfair. But it wasn't unfair to Juan Perez, so Juan Perez doesn't see that. And so that's my closing statement. Now, Neil, you can have your commentary and all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a commentary. Juan, I missed the front half of your speech that day. I think it came in at the second half. And I think the body should issue a public apology again to the victims and the survivors of 9/11 for this continued nonsense.
Totally agreed with Councilman Neil Carroll.
I'd just also like to say in regards to Mr. Franco's comments, I made a statement, I think back in April when this first came out. I didn't pick a side. I made a statement saying that I don't believe harassment is acceptable in any environment, in political, in private enterprise, in schools, in anywhere, in any workforce. Everyone should be treated equally and with respect, male, female, or the likes. That's what I stood for. That's what I ran against when I ran back in 2014. We ran against that type of governance that was happening in Bayonne, and I still stand We ran against that type of governance that was happening in Bayonne, and I still stand behind that. And I support anyone, and I encourage anyone in any environment, whether, you know, you're being harassed sexually, just retaliation on the job, discrimination. Speak out, have your voice heard, and, you know, stand up for yourself, women, men alike, especially women. So I do encourage that, and I support anyone who feels that way. And I am 100% against discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. Thank you.
I'd like to make a statement, too. Every one of us up here has been left out of something, been ignored. This is unfortunately what happens in politics. I've been cut out of pictures that wound up on Facebook or in the newspaper. I didn't go and make a big deal of it. I didn't make a big issue of it. I've had people not talk to me for a year and a half because of politics. So unfortunately, this is what happens in politics. I'm not saying it's right, and I'm not condoning it, but this happens over and over and over again. And I don't think it should have been a big issue just because it was 9/11. If you want to make an issue out of it, no matter when it happens, that's fine. But 9/11 should not have been the point when you picked that as an issue. So that's my statement.
I'd like to make a statement, too. This is supposed to be part of the meeting where we hear public comments. Our history is that we do allow some questions and answers during the public comment period, but we should not allow people to come up here and play this gotcha with the council people. All right? If people have legitimate questions to ask our elective official or employees, we would all be better served if they called and emailed their questions a few days in advance so that we can do some research and provide the answer. For example, if somebody has a budget question to ask, and it would be called up on the CFO, Donna Miler, in advance for a meeting, this should and can do the research, provide a complete answer that isn't done by the seat of her pants. She does the research, and she will have the answers to the question. Nobody benefits when we ask questions cold at public meetings, especially when they ask for people with a public agenda like Mr. Franco.
Do you have any other speakers? You had one inside, right?
Yes, Linda.
Oh, here we go. Oh, okay.
Hi, everybody. So I've been here before, talking to all of you on the internet the last time. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
May I pull this down? So I came out of terrible frustration. I'm a little befuddled by everything that just went on, so I got to get my head back together. This all started because I had to have a water line replaced, a main water line. It cost me $9,000. I'm retired recently, and I live on a fixed income. When they told me that this had to be done, they told me that I would have to pay $800 for a policeman. It's not covered under my insurance, and I worked as a physical therapist for 40 years. I don't think I ever got $800 in one day. I couldn't really understand why that was considered justifiable. I don't know. But that prompted me to make an appointment to come here to say that my quality of life in Bayonne has deteriorated dramatically. I think I said that the last time I spoke before all of you. But right now, I live in a place, when I go home tonight, I'm not going to have a place to park. I'm going to have to park by Curry Woods. I live on 55th Street. I have to walk then, with my cane in me, through an area that's, I have many, many drug addicts, drug dealers, alcoholics. I really fear for my life. I almost want to sit in an illegal spot and sleep in my car for the night. You know, but, okay, so it's all leading up to there's a couple of cars on our block that never move. There's one car in particular that has been in the same spot for seven months. When my work was being done on my water line, they put cones all around to say that you not to park there. This gentleman was in that coned area. He came out, he told the police officer, I can't move my car because it doesn't start. And the police officer said, okay, well, maybe they can work around it. The guy wasn't towed, the guy wasn't asked to move. He's still in the same spot. He got AA to come and jump him, and he moved his car up a little bit. But you know, when I don't have a driveway, I don't have a carport, I don't have handicap parking, this guy not only has this vehicle, but he also has a handicap spot on the other side of the street. Who gives these people these spots? He walks, I watch him in the snow, walking above snow mounds. I watch him walking down the block and bringing groceries back up the hill by foot. And I can't walk two blocks from Curry Woods. You know, and I don't want a handicap spot, really, because walking is good exercise for me, but where is the justification with this? You know, and so when I call up about this car that hasn't moved in seven months, the traffic people, and I called every month, I called every single month, sometimes twice a month, the traffic people tell me there's a backlog of 100 cars, and that they don't have enough people to take care of this. Really? In seven months, they couldn't go and mark this guy's tires and do something about this? So my level of frustration brought me here. Just, I know that probably nothing's going to happen, because the last time I came here, I spoke to you about homeless people sleeping in my backyard at night, about the drug addicts that shoot up on the side of my house at night. You said you would send a police officer, and you did. For about two weeks, we had a police officer that walked the beat there. No more. Nobody comes around anymore. Just the other day, I saw the guy sleeping in my backyard. I've lived in Bayonne all my life. I've never had to live like this. Now, another thing, another little pet peeve of mine, is that people come around with those little postcards, and they put them in cars, you know, sell your junk car, junk collectors, and they put it in the cars. And what do those people do? They take them out and they throw them on the ground. You have no side street parking. I'm out there sweeping the streets, you know? I don't know. I don't know what to say anymore.
I hear what you're saying. Just so you know, they are illegal, they're not allowed to put them, I mean, we...
Oh, are they illegal?
They're not allowed to put them on. They come in the middle of the night, so they really should be cracked out.
With the homeless people that sleep in my backyard?
Yes. But a question about the car, so this is on 55th Street?
Yes, it is.
Now, you know, we will call, and they will go and check that, because we call them, but that's the problem, right? They should just do it because you called up and said it. It shouldn't have to come to here for us to have to tell them and send an email and to the director and be like, can you go check this? I mean, it needs to be, you know, departments need to be managed, and this needs to be done on a regular basis, you know? That's why we have the parking permits, and I know areas. I'm shocked, because a lot of areas, I get a lot of complaints about people getting tickets, you know, and they didn't have, they are registered, they just didn't read things. So they are out there, and, you know, we do license plate reader. I mean, moving cars are a little different, but I will certainly follow up. 55th and where?
It's, I live on the corner of 55th and Avenue C. This vehicle is a Ford Expedition, LDX 94G, I think. I know it, because I call up every couple of weeks to say, when is it, when are you going to do something about it?
Okay, understood, and you shouldn't have to come here to...
I know, I know.
Have it taken care of, and I'm sorry it came out, but you can always call or email or apply to them.
I've been calling. I call up traffic...
No, call the council, I'm saying.
I'll call the council. Well, I called Mr. La Palusa on Monday.
You could have called in this way. I only want to make you come out, you know, obviously...
Well, now I'm not going to find a spot to park, so maybe I'll sleep out in front and make a handicap spot out there. I'm only kidding. A little levity for all the excitement you've had this evening.
So I empathize with you. You know, we can start up those patrols again in that area. The police chief Geisler is in the back, he's shaking his head...
That would be great, that would be great.
...about what's going on there. No one should have to live in fear in their own neighborhood. That is not a goal of us. You know, we are, I think we're putting some new police in again. We're putting more police in the academy. We're trying to, you know, get some more feet on the street and take care of that, because we do recognize, I do recognize, I know about, you know, crime in town, or people aren't feeling a little less safe, whether there really is a crime increase or not. It doesn't matter, it's people's perception and how they feel. And I empathize with you, and it's not acceptable. We do pay a lot of taxes, and we need to do a better job at that.
Yeah, thank you very much for recognizing my concerns.
I also want to say to you that Mr. Carter, that those flyers that you're talking about, mine purchasing, I picked up a lot of them, I took it over to his office, I dropped it right in his desk, and I said, can you do anything about it? Mr. Carter did try. He called, and he tried to put a stop to this.
They put one on, it seems like it's every single week, there's a new one. And then the people don't take it with them. They throw it on the ground. Where do they think that's going to go?
I pick them up. I know.
Well, I have a whole corner property to pick up, so if it was only just in the front, I might not mind so much.
Same here.
I got to pick up all the corners. So I get, you know, a little disturbed when I see this garbage all over. I'm a garbage fiend, so I think, you know, got to keep stuff clean. But thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Madeline Proll?
Good evening. I have a lot of questions, like from the seniors and non-seniors, too. Now, you do contract here for all these buildings that are going up, all these condos and everything, but we don't see no senior buildings going up. You only have, I called the Pals, and they said they have five senior buildings, and they have low-income down on First Street by the water, they kept on saying, by the water, okay, for 2,000 people. I like to know, well, how come you're not building anything for seniors? How come you're not building anything even for the veterans? How come you're not building anything even for domestic violence, you know, something happens, and the women have to get out of the house? You don't even have apartments for them. Now, come on, all these council people, you should know this already. Where are the senior buildings? Where? They're terrible. You ever go on 25th Street and Avenue A, what they look like? They try to buy drugs off the seniors down there. It's terrible. It's totally terrible. And mayor, where is the mayor? I agree with the women. Where are they? Where is this mayor? Is he hiding in the basement somewhere down the shore? Where is he, like Biden? Where is he? All he cares about is his garbage, made a deal with the garbage. But what about the seniors here? And then when you call a Pals in, because people want application for housing, they say, sorry, we can't give any application because of the virus. So why, everybody else can go back to work, kids go back to school, but you can't pick up an application for housing? How long are they going to keep on saying that? For two years, three years? How long? How long are they going to say that to people? And you can't come into City Hall, you meet people outside. Why is that? You still don't let nobody come in here, but you want everybody else to go to work, back to work and do their job. But don't come in here, and don't pick up no applications until when? The virus is over, when's that? I mean, so where's the applications? How do you get one for all the people that want housing? And then you put up condos. You really think that you're going to fill up all these condos in Bayonne? The ones on 45th Street over there by Costco's? Section 8 is in there, great, because everybody needs, but what about the seniors that are on the waiting list? Do you ever think that maybe we can put somebody of these seniors in these condos? Nope. Nobody thinks about them either, waiting 10, 15 years, just to get a senior home. I see seniors all, I mean, maybe, you know what the problem is in Bayonne? I think we need new blood. We need maybe a new council? Maybe we need, stop voting for the same mayor, because Bayonne people have a habit of voting for the same mayor until he dies or retires in Bayonne. They never want to get a new mayor. And I, about time, I think Bayonne has to stop and really look around and see what this mayor is not doing for everyone, and start voting for a new mayor, and maybe we'll get something done.
I can give you some answers. I just want to, we don't control housing, it's a separate entity, it's guided, but it is. I'm not giving an excuse. I don't know why their application process isn't open. I do know they aren't accepting new, but I also do know, because I've checked for some people, that even though they're not taking applications, they're like 10 years behind on their list, I think. But they, Bayonne Housing Authority has sold a property, they were in, on 25th Street and Avenue A, the back buildings were part of it. So they are sitting on a large chunk of money, and they are looking for a piece of property to buy and build more senior housing in Bayonne.
But I think it's just amazing, when you look at the next town, Jersey City, right? You come here to Bayonne, and the city hall, they tell you, no, you got to go to Jersey City for that. You got to go to Jersey City for that. You got to leave your town to go to another town, because Bayonne does not handle anything. You have, really, what do you, when people, I work in Hoboken, as a door walker, and all the people, and I see all the condos and all the upies and everything, and they say, how's Bayonne? I said, you don't want to come to Bayonne, because you know why? You don't want to spend $3,000 to live in a condo in Bayonne, because they have absolutely nothing in this town. Broadway is completely dead. We don't even have a movie theater. You have nothing in this town that's worth $3,000 to spend for a condo. Nothing. They, in Jersey City, you can get a condo, they usually have a lot, like for $100,000. My friend just got one in Jersey City, $100,000. You can't sell it for seven years or something like that with the law. But you don't have anything like that in Bayonne. If you do, you don't put anything in the paper like that for anybody else to do that. And mostly, when they build a condo, how come like five apartments, or maybe even four of those apartments in that condo can go to low-income? I don't see a lot of for that either.
No, but I also wanted to just let you know, the one development that was approved recently at the old AMP site on Avenue A, they are looking to do just what you're talking about, putting a senior component in there, so it'll be mixed use, so part of it will be for 55 and over. It's not a done deal yet, because there's a lot of state approvals and federal stuff, they're going through that process to see how they can make it work. But that need has come up, people have expressed that interest, you know, even for, if people want their parents not to live far away, so they have to go visit them, you know, it's more conducive. There is that need, it has been. I, it was a request I made, I know the developer, the casco who's sitting here, he was also looking into doing some senior stuff there, also like a mixed use, so some seniors don't want to be necessarily in an all-senior building. So these are kind of the new model that they have. There are a number of developers that are looking to do that on their own, but as a city, the only thing we do is really the housing, and they are looking, actively looking for property to build development. They do have money to build another senior housing. They're just looking for the site. They had a site on Oak Street that they had right of first refusal on. I don't know where it stands. Again, that's a separate entity. I'm not trying to pass the buck, but we really, they are controlled by HUD. They're not employees of the city in Bayonne. They're just our, you know, housing authority.
HUD? You think HUD is good on 25th Street? You see how many people live in one apartment, how small it is? Sometimes you have three, four families living in one apartment down in HUD, which is terrible.
Well, that's a violation, it's not true.
Of course it is, but that's really, that's really bad. And first of all, and, you know, I don't understand, you made all these deals with all these contractors, all these condos and everything, and you can't even build a crossover bridge to get to Costco's or CVS?
Well, they are...
Yeah, but did it come through the, I know, but when you make these contracts, and you give them like 25 years or whatever, tax-free, and all this money that's going, all these condos that are building, you're going to tell me they couldn't contribute something?
They did, they did. The 22nd Street pedestrian crossway bridge was, is being funded by the two properties at the St. Joe's. They have contributed more than half of that cost for that.
Well, how many is going up? They should all do it.
So they do do that. The money is there, we have the funding, we also re-bonded for it.
Okay, well, Jersey City, what they made a deal with their condos that they were building are 460 beds for homeless people. 460 beds? That's pretty good, by where St. Lucy's was in shelter. We don't have any of that here. My friend lives in the Y, he pays like $500 to live in there. He's afraid to say about all the bedbugs, because they said that he has to pay for them. For the next time, they have to come in and clean them up. Are you kidding me? I said, you know what? I called the Department of Health, you know what they said? Oh, sorry, we can't do anything about that. Can't do anything about, so you want all the bedbugs that are going, so many bedbugs in the YMCA is outrageous, and they're afraid to say something, because they're afraid they're going to get thrown out, because that's all they could afford is $500. And they're telling them they're going to pay it the next time. So, you know, so instead of Bayonne bees, will be Bayonne bedbugs, because that's what's going to happen. You're going to have all these bedbugs everywhere. Yeah. And so why can't the Department of Health go down there and check it out?
I'm not sure why they're telling that.
And they said they can't, because it's the Y, and it's up to them to do it.
I don't know. I don't know that to be the case. Our law directors here, is our, are, a health department not allowed to go to the Y and check for bedbugs?
Go look down there, they're sleeping on mattresses with five holes, five holes in the mattresses, and all the bedbugs are coming out of them.
No, this is Jay Coffey, the law director can tell us.
I will inquire of the health department, but I find it hard to believe that the health department doesn't have jurisdiction to go in.
Oh, yeah, they said that, they said that was the YMCA's problem, not the Department of Health. They're not going to go in there and look at the bedbugs.
Mr. Coffey can follow up on that.
One guy I know is sleeping with five big holes in his mattress, and that's how they sleep, and that's what they do for $500. That's how they give them. And bedbugs are coming out. He just told me, yeah, I just killed like about 30 of them.
Well, I would continue to call the health department, and we will follow up.[1731.66] Well, I would continue to call the health department and we will follow up, the law director can follow up on that.
Yeah, I mean, what's going on in Bayonne? I mean, nobody wants to do their job. You know? When is it going to stop? I mean, and you put, the reason for this council is that they approve contracts, right, for buildings?
We passed laws in order, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so in other words, you have not seen any buildings going up for seniors or low income, where you're doing all this signing for contracts and all this, that's been going through. Not one have you seen any seniors or low, for low income, have you? But you've been approving all these other condos around this whole, around Bayonne.
They do pay into the Affordable Trust Fund, which is their required, and what the city does with that is an administrative issue.
But I haven't seen any low-income buildings going up, or senior buildings going up all this time. All I see is little condos, and I see the rents, you know, they're paying high rent, so they figure that, you know what, they're going to make people in Bayonne start raising their rents too.
There were two, just to say, I think on Broadway in the 40s, there was a low income that came on.
On Broadway, I seen, I seen two-bedroom apartment across street from the post office, on top of a store for $2,400.
No, there were two low-income ones, and then we also did a low-income and disability one on the old highways on Holborn Avenue.
And how do people get, they can't get their, no applications, because they?
It was a lottery system run by the windmill.
Yeah, Avenue E and 45th Street, I believe, is one of them.
Yeah, so we, there has been some new one, nearly, I'm not saying we nearly met what's required, or what's needed, I shouldn't say what's required, we do meet what's required by law, but we, you know, I agree with you that it needs, we need to do better.
Yeah, you need, yeah.
But we are doing, we are, they are making that, you're seeing more, we are getting more.
I mean, you want people to come here to live in these condos, but you don't have nothing here. They're going to come here and they're going to move out. The ones by me, they moved, they moved in, because I know a couple of them, and they moved right out in two months. You know why? There's nothing here in Bayonne for them. Nothing. I can't even buy a dress or a pair of shoes in Bayonne, I have to go out of town, because there's nothing here in Bayonne. There's nothing on Broadway like it used to be, there's nothing. Broadway is dead, completely dead. Your restaurants, you may have a couple, but you don't even have good restaurants in Bayonne anymore. They're dead. You walk on Broadway and you see mice coming out of the basements on some of these restaurants. That's nice, really nice. You don't think everybody else doesn't see that? They see them. Yeah. So you tell me, you're going to build all these condos, but you're not building nothing for seniors, but you want people to come to a town that's dead. Really dead. And you don't see how dead Broadway is, you don't see that there's no stores there, you don't want to build up Broadway. You don't want to put people back, you know, walking on Broadway and going shopping? I mean, come on now, you see those stores, they're dead, they're dead, the restaurants are dead. Because you, I don't know who does your entertainment or who does to bring people here into Bayonne, but you're not doing a very good job of it. You're not.
Ma'am, I have to just point out, that it's a chicken or the egg type of theory. If you don't have enough people, or if you don't have the, an attractive enough income base, that the A-type tenants, the A-type landlords, aren't going to come here. So there's, I remember being able to walk from 5th Street to 55th Street, if you had $10,000 bucks, you could buy, you could spend all $10,000. In the mid 90s, though, I couldn't buy a collared shirt. 1994, couldn't buy a collared shirt, because Foxes was closed, everything was gone, and you had to go to Jersey City to get it at the mall. So that's.
There you go again, Jersey, that's right, because Jersey City is the next town.
Jersey City also has several hundred thousand people and a, and a path station.
But they know what to bring, how to bring the people in.
Well, I do recall in 19, when I was going to high school in downtown Jersey City, what a war zone it was from 76 to 80, and thereafter.
Of course, of course, and I remember Newark too, when they had all the riots and everywhere out.
Right, so there are ebbs and flows.
Bayonne is only safe because you think it's safe, because you don't put everything out in, on the, in the paper. I lived here all my life, I know how Bayonne is. They hide things, they make it sound like that Bayonne is so safe, and Bayonne isn't that safe. So don't make it sound like it is.
I wasn't, I, I.
Okay, but don't say, but you don't put everything out there either. You hide it, and you know you do. I mean, I know, everybody knows how Hudson County is, they hide a lot of things, especially Bayonne. It's not safe. And you really think by building condos, you're going to have all these people paying all this, and it's going to be a different, and what are they going to do? They're going to leave. They're going to leave, because there's nothing here. You don't, you don't, you're doing it all wrong, you're doing completely wrong, you don't, you don't, you don't, you're not, you're not putting anything out there.
Ma'am, the city isn't building this up, these are, these are people coming here, investors, spending their money.
I don't know why, they're crazy, I don't know who said that, come to Bayonne, and I don't think they really looked around.
We've had, we've had, if investors, if high-end stores saw the opportunity here, and they do, they research this like you can't believe, if they felt that they could successfully put stores here, they would, and they have. I mean, we have stores that we didn't have 20 years ago, we have, we have higher quality.
How long have people downtown been asking for a supermarket down there? A lot, a long time, and not one supermarket went up there.
And there was a supermarket at AMP.
Then AMP, how long has that been closed, sir?
Exactly, and, and, and these companies look at towns like this, and they want to see median income and a population that supports something like that.
So how come you didn't put, everybody's been asking for a supermarket downtown, and you, how many years?
Okay, well, I understand your frustration, and we heard you, you know, hopefully, as we fill up these departments, some of these businesses will find us to be a vibrant community and want to come and invest here also, but until, that's what our goal is, we need them to come and want to make an investment in us.
Well, maybe if we get, no, maybe if we get a better mayor that can do something for Bayonne, maybe then, but right now, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, I just want to go to, on the record, to say Bayonne has a lot of very good restaurants, and.
Totally agree.
So I encourage everyone to, to support our local restaurants, especially in this time of COVID.
There's not that many restaurants that are good in Bayonne, everybody knows it.
That's why I got to wait 30 minutes.
Council President, I'd like to make two points, very brief ones. The Speaker just kept using the word condo, condo, condo. Most of the housing that's been built recently is not condominiums, it's rental housing, because the developers don't believe that condominiums sell. There've been very few condominium apartments built here in years. Point two, the Speaker claimed that Bayonne was dead. We've just had the biggest population increase in Bayonne since the 1920s. Population surged from 63,000 to 71,000. Our population plummeted from the 1930s till 1990, it began to turn around slowly in the 90s, and in the last 10 years, the population boomed, it went up by 13%. Now, yes, Bayonne has various issues, we're not dead, our population just went up by 13%.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
And after there's no more speakers, we will move on to the rest of the agenda. Oh nine is an ordinance to amend the ordinance number 021-33, consenting to, one, the sale of the project, the 17 West 7th Urban Renewal LLC to 175 West 7th Development Urban Renewal LLC, and two, confirming the assignment of the financial agreement between the City of Bayonne and 175 West 7th Urban Renewal LLC to 175 W. West 7th Development Urban Renewal LLC, and three, confirming an amendment to the financial agreement to amend the estimated construction schedule for the project, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, November 10th, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by Councilmember Perez, Ms. Nadrowski, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Down for a second.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
He's back here.
Yeah, he's back. We're on.
On oh nine, Mr. La Palusa.
Scriveller's error.
Aye.
Oh 10.
We're going to table that on the request of Mr. Gamal, if everyone's okay with that?
Yes, I second that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that as well.
Not introduced, you're good. Oh 11 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, November 10th, at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy Harrington Council chambers, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage.
Second.
And on the resolution, 11, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Oh 12 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7, traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, November 10th, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Consent agenda is a resolution moved by the Council as a whole, ordering the following communications to be received and filed, it covers C1 through C25. Are there any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Officers' report is a resolution moved by the Council as a whole, ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within to be adopted. It covers OR1 through OR2. Any questions on the officers' reports?
No, but I just have a comment. I'd just like to comment on OR2, the appointing of Gary Chimaluski as the Director for the Department of Municipal Services. Gary's not here tonight, I just would like to thank him. I know Mr. Chimaluski has served Bayonne in various roles, and joined our administration as Public Works Director, and Gary's a consummate professional, he's done a wonderful job, residents like him. Gary was, Mr. Chimaluski was planning on, you know, riding off into the sunset and winding down and stepping back in his role, and with the situation that has arisen, Gary, when the mayor acts, he, you know, I don't know how willingly, you know, he needed a little arm twisting, but he stepped up, and Gary has agreed, because, you know, we really need somebody to step into that role. We have a $3 million CSO project, $300 million CSO project going on, and it's a big role, and I'm confident, and I would like to thank Gary Chimaluski for his past service, and for stepping up and taking on this additional responsibility, that I know, you know, like I said, he's winding down in his time here and looking forward to retirement, but he stepped up and is doing right by the residents of Bayonne, and I have a heartfelt thanks and all the confidence that Gary Chimaluski will do a fantastic job, and I'd like to thank him for that.
I 100% agree with you. Excellent choice, fantastic, ma'am.
Totally agree.
On the officers' reports, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Consent resolutions is a resolution moved by the Council as a whole, ordering the following warrants, resolutions to be adopted. On your agenda, it's misnumbered, it covers CR1 through CR25. Are there any questions on the consent resolutions?
Madeline, I'd like to hold CR15, the approving the design guidelines for the town center, just till next month, if that's right with everyone, can we postpone that till next month?
Sure.
Can we move that in general? Any other questions? Any questions online from CR1 through CR25?
Move it, do you want to move?
Okay, so on the consent resolutions, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Our one is approving Chapter 159, Number 2, in the calendar year 2021 budget, seeking permission from the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of items of revenue. This resolution is moved by Councilmember La Palusa, Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Our two is a resolution, resolution amending agreement number CY21024 with CME Associates for Professional Engineering Services as the in-house engineer, increasing the agreement amount by $300,000, making the total amount not to exceed $1,050,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Our three is an amendment, mending resolution number 21-06-16053, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with 175 W. 7th Development Urban Renewal to correct the Scrivenger's error and remove all references of Lot 3, insofar as the correct block in Lot should be Block 3 or 4, Lot 1. Would like to move it.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Our four is designating certain property located at 562-568 Broadway, which is identified as Block 184, Lots 1, 2, and 3 on the official tax map of the city, as a non-condominations area of need of redevelopment, and authorizing and directing the Planning Board to prepare redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Okay, I have several add-ons to go with this. Add one is authorizing the purchase of four police patrol-equipped 2022 Ford Utility Intercept Police Vehicles from Winter Ford of Cherry Hill, New Jersey, under state contract 20-Fleet 01189, for a total price of $133,478.
A move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Add two is authorizing an amendment to Agreement Number CY21068 with Altis Media Sales for the promotion of the city's COVID-19 vaccination program, to increase said contract in the amount of $30,000, making the total contract amount not to exceed $60,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Add three is authorizing the request to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for an extension of the award of the bid for the local freight impact fund award, LFIF Number 19, Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor Port Access Project, Road Project 2, March 24, 2022.
Move it.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.[1627.32]
Aye.
Add 4 is authorizing the cancellation of ordinance number 020-28 adopted October 21, 2020 for the appropriation of $100,000 for the capital improvement from, from the capital improvement fund in connection with the acquisition of Marist High School.
I have some questions on this. Ms. Mauer, I know that this was paid with a check. Have we received these funds back already?
Yes, we have.
And a check, who's the check from?
The funds were wired in. I don't know exactly.
We don't, we don't know who wired them to us? Was it the Archdiocese?
Can get that information.
Was it the Marist, Archdiocese? Who, who sent us the money?
Jake, who paid the money?
And this is just, okay.
Who would like to move it?
Where, he's looking something up.
Oh, okay. I thought, you got your answer.
Madeline, we've got, we've got one of the ads, the name we've got is Peninsula.
Add 7?
Peninsula.
Oh, so this Peninsula Court LLC?
Yeah.
Okay, so we received the check from Peninsula Court LLC.
We got a wire.
We got a wire. So we already have those funds?
Yes.
Okay, and this is in connection with another one that's coming up. So this is the cancellation. Okay, I'll ask the questions on, when we get to the other one.
Okay. So would you like to move it?
Move it. I always accept money.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
Aye. Even if it is our own back, we'll take it.
It's a refund. Add 5 is authorizing the purchase of four GE, GTAC computer systems for four new police vehicles from GTBM of East Rutherford, New Jersey, under state contract 89980 for a total cost of $32,695.40.
A move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
Aye.
Add 6 is authorizing the purchase and installation of emergency police vehicle operating equipment for the four new police vehicles from Elite Vehicle Solutions for a total amount of 500, $59,820.20 under the state contract 17-Fleet 00749.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
Aye.
Add 7 is authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the assignment and assumption of the purchase and sale agreement between the City of Bayonne and Marist Brothers of Schools, Inc., and to terminate the City of Bayonne's interest in said property.
I have multiple questions on this. So I'm reading this, and I'm trying to put together the two. So we already got the money. So does that mean we already transferred ownership of this property?
We have ownership of the property. We had a con-
Well, we transferred the contract.
We assigned the contract to Peninsula Court.
So we assigned the contract already. So this is asking for authorization for something that was already done. So it was done. So I'm just trying to understand the timeline here. So this is already done.
Board of Education advised the City of Bayonne-
And I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about our thing. What this ad right here says that, so this has already been done. It's signed.
It has been signed.
So we're not authorizing because it's been done already.
We can, with the resolution to add to the assignment, we can re-execute the documents, but there was a timeframe that had to be met.
So this, so my question is, this was already done. So you're asking us to authorize something that you've already done. So we're not authorizing it technically. We're ratifying and confirming. Would you agree? I mean, I want to just be truthful in what's going on.
My intent would be have the document re-executed.
But who author, so again, who, I don't understand. This is, we always go through what the authorization of the body of the government can do. We only do certain things in land acquisition and contracts is us.
Correct.
So under what authority was this already signed and money already changed?
The problem was, there wasn't authority. We had to do it, it was a time-sensitive thing. It was signed in good faith, and this is the resolution that would authorize.
My problem with this is, so this is saying that we're no longer involved in Marist. My problem is, is that I, I didn't, and I don't believe any council people here were involved in this, and quite frankly, it was a decision made strictly by the mayor without any consultation to this council at all, unless somebody else was in a meeting that I don't know about. I just don't, I'm not, I don't know, I, the mayor made a decision, and I don't want it to be like, this decision was made, the money was transferred, the papers are signed. The mayor made this decision to, to get out of Marist, no longer pursue it as a, a school, because we were the ones that signed to do that. I don't want the public pointing a finger at me saying, Sharon, you were part of what took Marist out of being the equation of fixing or shorting to school.
Okay.
Because I wasn't part of this. I wasn't known to it. I wasn't aware of it. I didn't have a say in it, and I have a problem with that. And if the mayor wants to own it, I just want it to reflect in the thing that we're, he already took the action on his own.
When was this signed?
For, for, um, last week, last Thursday, last Wednesday.
And we found out about it an hour ago.
You have, the Board of Education made a determination they weren't going to pursue this contract. They did not want, it's not our decision. We were, we were acting as a conduit for the Board of Education.
Okay, but again, Jay, I'm not, I'm not talking about that.
If we said no, would we have to return the 100,000?
I'm not, I'm not talking about that. My point is, I want this to really reflect what is happening here. We are not authorizing. It was already done. We're affirming and ratifying, and confirming and ratifying actions that we're taking with the mayor without consent of the council, without our input, you know, what is, and we're transferring this to somebody. How is this determined who we're transferring to? Was there an RFP?
That's a, no, 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 wait, wait. That, that's not, we have an interest in a contract. We were told by the Board of Education they did not want to pursue this any further.
Yes.
Our redevelopment council found a ready, willing, and able person to step in and negotiate with Marist, and this is probably a couple months ago, to take over the contract. That individual, one of the individuals, the principal died. So our redevelopment council found a second entity, an individual, to come forward to take our place, to just, and they negotiated directly with Marist.
I think the last one, the last entity that was interested in, was interested in buying, building a school there. Is this still the case? When, when that interest, the interest who died, the principal died, I think that was the school, a school building was still in the, in the thing.
Correct.
So that was, I understood that at the time, and we were made aware of that, and it was going to be a private developer doing a partnership in building us a school. But my understanding now is, there's not going to be a school in this property.
The, the school system was the one that was driving this.
I, I understand that.
And the school system is told that they don't want to pursue this anymore. It was cost prohibitive for them to try and do this school. What turned out, what was supposed to be a $16 million fix turned out to be in excess of $50 million.
I understand that, but again, the question is just really, I'm trying to understand, first of all, how we, because it was our, we signed the contract, how we transferred it.
The mayor signed the contract. You authorized him to sign the contract. This-
To, to this entity. How was this entity picked?
No, no, no.
The contract that was originally signed was between us and Marist.
Yes.
This is an assignment and assumption to Peninsula to take over. So we're done. We don't have any-
But we're assigning our, we're assigning our part of the contract to this company.
The whole contract, and we're getting out of-
Yes, but how did we pick this person?
We didn't pick the person. Marist picked the person. Our redevelopment council-
But we could have picked the person. We didn't have a say in that.
We could have picked, anybody could have come in and-
So my problem is, I don't want to see us wind up in a long litigation like what happened down at the base, and we were locked there for 20 years because we transferred property kind of improperly without everyone having a fair opportunity and stuff. So we, we have the contract.
Can I, can I ask for clarification to your point about the finances? The money that's in question here on Add 7 is essentially-
Our deposit.
Issuing our interest. And now that we no longer have interest, that deposit's being returned.
Correct.
So the, there's two things here. There's one, that we want to see a school, another school in town, which is a separate issue, and I agree with. The first issue now is, why have we done this? Or why are we receiving this money? Or why are we receiving it now?
No, no, the question is, is, the question is, is, we're at being, this, this resolution we're talking about now is asking us to authorize something that's already taken place. So we shouldn't say we're authorizing it. We were not involved, authorizing it. We're consenting.
It's language issue.
Well, it's saying that we, as a council, approved turning Marist into something other than a school, and I didn't have a say in that. The mayor made that decision completely on his own, signing the paper.
This has nothing to do with whether or not we want to agree to turn it into anything else. I want to see it be a school.
No, this is, no, this is.
I want to see it be a school. This is removing our interest.
This is taking our interest out of it and turning it over to a developer. Well, Donna, you may think that, but people who are people, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm asking a question of the law director, just to understand. Has this already happened?
The, the mayor last week signed this document. It was understood that we were going to be introducing a resolution, authorizing the signature. It was all in good faith. The $100,000 to be retained, it was also, we had, Marist had exigent circumstances, the Board of Education exigent circumstances, and we agreed to move forward with this because we're extricating ourselves.
Under what authority, though? Under whose, under the authority of, that would normally be under the authority of the council, who is totally blindsided by us doing this. I mean, I don't know. Councilman Lappalusa, I, I don't want, I don't want to be, I don't want to make, sit here and be like, I made this decision to say that we're pulling out of Marist and abandoning it, because that's, I'm not saying, it should reflect that the mayor made this decision on his own. He signed this on his own without the consent of the council, without us knowing about it.
Then we can amend the resolution to, to ratify and affirm his actions.
Which is what we're doing. But it is honest. He took the action already. That's the more honest, truthful-
Can we get a financial clarification from our financial office?
Maybe I'm wrong, Jay, but we were just a conduit with this. This was the Board of Ed's project. They came in to ask us to help them with the financing. It was never the cities. It was never the cities. And within that, then it went to, well, we turned it over to the HCIA. So it was, and so we can get out of it.
But the truth is, so now we're, now we're the conduit with a private developer.
But that private developer-
We are a conduit now with a private developer. That's what we are. We absolutely are.
No, we are transferring, we are terminating our interest in this project because the prime mover on this, the Board of Education, told us, we can't do this deal. And Marist, and Marist negotiate-
I understand that. But why don't we just turn it back to the Archdiocese and say, we're, we're backing out of it?
It's actually, it's actually-
We picked, we, we transferred, we went into this, and we all know other developers were interested into the Marist property, but they agreed to sell it to the city, and now we essentially have taken it. We now are saying we're no longer interested in, we now transferred it to another, another developer. I'm just not understanding, I just want to understand that we're, what I'm saying here is, and that doesn't matter where we're going, is just the fact that you're at, this is not a truthful, a truthful ordinance, because it's asking us to approve something that's already done. So it should be a ratifying confirm. I didn't have an opinion on it. I didn't have any input on it. We didn't get to say whether we were for this or against this. I know, you know, I had spoken to Councilman Lappalusa about it. He's not happy with it. Like, so we weren't informed of this. So why should we sit here and say, we're, we're authorizing this?
I can amend, I can amend the resolution to reflect that it's a ratification and affirmation.
Well, that would be a more honest depiction of what happened.
All right, then, give me, much I can do.
It's a more, it is what happened. We are-
So we have a motion to amend the resolution to reflect ratification and affirmation.
Move it.
Second.
No, I can't.
I, I want to just make a comment. I'm not against that the mayor would do something like this, but I just think we should have been notified more than an hour before the meeting. And that's the part that I don't like about this, and we will correct the wording, but in the future, I think, something like this, we should know about. If it happened last week, we should have known about it last week.
I, I think you're absolutely right. And like I said, I think there was two issues here. The, the question of the wording and the question of whether we, and I believe I can speak for all of us, want to see another school built in the city. What might be nice is to have representation from the Board of Ed next month to comment on it.
Right, but you can't stop Peninsula from negotiating either.
And another question.
I'm in agreement with you when I'm saying that. Right.
And another question. We are getting back the $100,000, but we also have a spend. We spent money.
All, all-
We spent legal fees.
All legal and professional fees would be reversed.
And our Board of Education, now that you mention it, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Could I hear, Jay was saying something?
But our Board of Education has spent.
The Board of Education was the prime mover on this. If they spent, if they spent money in, if they spent money in connection with this, that's their business. They were the ones that came to us and said, we think this is a, a good idea. We'd like to, to put a school here. It turns out, that's not the case. The City of Bayonne is going to be reimbursed for all its professional fees and for its, its initial deposit of $100,000, which we were going to get back from the Board of Education had this deal gone through.
So where is the other fees?
The, the, the professional fees have to be calculated and provided to, to Peninsula, and they will reimburse us for that.
So that'll be on next month's agenda, I'm sure, accepting that.
No, that's part of the assumption and assignment. Well, yeah, if, if we get the money in, we, we would accept it, yeah.
If you want. I mean, it's not necessary. The reason I put this on, this is accounting, because it was an ordinance. So I have to cancel it.
I understand that, yes, absolutely.
So I have to do it for the audit. But if I get in a reimbursement, I don't, I mean, if you wanted in a resolution, I could put it in.
Well, I just want to know what happened. I want to know that we were made whole on our expenditure on this. We spent, we spent money.
No, I don't.
Yeah, I would.
Because we've been, we keep it separate because in the end, the Board of Ed is supposed to reimburse us for everything.
Yeah, and, and-
So everything's, it's accounted separately, so we have to depend.
And I know it's not, and as I heard, it said, the hundreds of thousands of dollars that the school board paid, spent is, the onus is on them, but honestly, it's on us taxpayers, which we're all, well, most of us are all taxpayers here. And as, as good stewards for our residents, we should be worried if our Board of Ed lost hundreds of thousands of dollars on this and aren't getting reimbursed. I mean, I know it's not in our authority, but I would hope the Board of Ed is looking to get that money back, too, that they put out. Because $300,000, when they come back and want to raise taxes next year, we're the ones that have to raise those taxes.
And it was interesting that they raised after receiving in excess of several million. So I'm not, I'm not in, in complete fear that they're not whole. I think they will be made whole, and you gave a financial explanation. But again, someone can come and explain. We had an interest. We no longer have an interest. This council wants to see another school in the City of Bayonne. Let's figure that out.
Okay.
Moving forward.
All right, so the resolved paragraph will be amended to, now therefore be resolved by the municipal council of the City of Bayonne, that the actions of the mayor and clerk in executing documents necessary to effectuate, one, an assignment assumption of the purchase and sale agreement between the City of Bayonne and the Marist Brothers, Marist Brothers of the School, Inc., and the termination of the City of Bayonne's interest in said property are hereby ratified and affirmed. And Mr. Carroll, you still want to move it?
With the amended language, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And on the amended version, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski.
Aye.
I have two items that are not on your agenda. Is an ordinance entitled the Bond Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Bond Ordinance Number 020-49, finally adopted by the City Council on October 20, 2021, to increase the appropriations therein by $917,214, and to increase the authorization of the bonds or notes therein by $917,214 to finance part of the additional cost thereof. And-
I just want to reiterate something. This is like a drawdown type thing, where if we don't spend it, we don't have to-
Correct. Whatever we don't use at the end of the project, it'll be canceled. Just everything will be through the council.
Okay.
So what, what is the total now, this is all for Fitzpatrick Park?
Right.
What is the total cost that we, we're now, are we, I know we don't have the total cost, but what have we bonded for? We have-
We didn't, we haven't bonded for anything. We have over 1.6 million from the I-Bank, H2O loans. We have over 600,000 from the Hudson County Open Space. And then for the change order that's going through, we already have preapproval from the I-Bank. So we need to have the ordinance appropriate to have something to spend against, and then we draw down.
So that'll be about 3.1 million, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
For Fitzpatrick Park?
No, not 3.1, 1.6.
And then you have, and then another six, there's two.
Like two, like 2.6.
Yeah, and then we're just doing nine.
Right. I'm, I'm bringing it up to three, just in case there's any other issues. So of course, we have to do the, we have a change order coming in because of the contaminated soil that we didn't expect. So instead of keep amending an ordinance and amending an ordinance, I said, we'll just bring it up to the 3 million, and then whatever we don't use, we cancel.
So, so we're bonding-
So the project was, it was to the penny. That was the problem.
No, I'm not, I'm not worried about that.
It should have never been done that way. So the 2,082,786, which was the original ordinance, was the exact bid amount that, that the, I don't know, Pacerno, the bond ordinance should have been more, right? That didn't include any design and any engineering, any inspections. So we've been picking up from that in our capital fund. So that's